He's the pro- he's the chief of property. They've purchased property. But now my safety is too important. Well, we'll be at the end of the month. Oh, gosh. Looks like it got all beat up.
That's why it doesn't stay on there.
All right. Good evening and welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Sunnyside City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And for the record, there is, may I ask, for the record, all members of council are here. And staff, we've got active fire chief, we've got police chief, we've got Mr. Fisher, we've got Mr. Martin, and we've got Mr. Riley. So, welcome, everybody. First order of business, I'm going to ask you all to stand, and do we have something to do with the invocation? Okay, Mrs. Lyd, please come forward. After the invocation, please, you may stand in this light, please.
We are so grateful that our city council can meet tonight, and also with our officers and fire officers, that they're all here tonight. They're just grateful for the service that these people wear in our community, and we have to bless them, to bless our community, and the city council, or decisions that they're making in the near future. And we're able to know that presence in our lives.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the reprieve of justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. So, the first item of business tonight is one of the, uh, one of the things that, as mayor, I get to enjoy a great deal. A week ago, we swore in and attended a great number of our firefighters and police officers, and tonight, we've got two more that we get to pen. And so, I'm going to come forward, and I'm going to read the swearing-in documents, and then family members are going to come up and get to pen. And so, I'm gonna come around, so that we can do that, and we're going to start with Chief Layden. All right. I'm going to ask you, please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Robert Layden.
I, Robert Layden.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington?
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington?
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And the ordinances of the city of Sunnyside?
And the ordinances of the city of Sunnyside.
That I will abide by the code of ethics and conduct as set forth in the police policy manual.
That I will abide by the code of ethics and conduct as set forth in the police policy manual.
And will, to the best of my judgment, skills and abilities?
And will, to the best of my judgment, skills and abilities?
Truly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties?
Truly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties?
Of the position of chief of police?
Of the position of chief of police?
In and for the city of Sunnyside?
In and for the city of Sunnyside.
Yakima County?
Yakima County.
State of Washington?
State of Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law?
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sir? And Chief Layden will be pened by his family, his wife Charlotte, with, I don't read the writing, Cash, Wyatt, and Welton. Weston, okay. And then I would like to ask Cameron Hubbert, please come forward.
We picked an easier one.
You picked an easier one, yes.
Yes.
Firefighter needs shorter sentence.
That's right.
We're in a hurry.
Enjoy about city staff, is we do have a good sentence. All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Cameron Hubbert.
I, Cameron Hubbert.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Washington? The state of Washington.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of an assistant fire chief for the city of Sunnyside?
Discharge faithfully the duties of an assistant fire chief for the city of Sunnyside?
Best of my knowledge and ability?
To the best of my knowledge and ability?
And to hold myself to the highest moral and ethical standards?
Hold myself to the highest moral and ethical standards?
As a representative of the Sunnyside Fire Department and this profession?
Representative of the Sunnyside Fire Department and this profession.
All right, so, sign these documents as well. And the council, please. And our assistant chief will be pened by his family and wife, Kristen, and daughter, Elise, and Amelia. Please come forward. Gentlemen, it's truly an honor to have two of you serving in these positions in the city of Sunnyside, and I wish you the best as you continue on with your career, and as you continue to serve Sunnyside. And I am truly impressed by the support you're receiving. So, this is great, it's great to have you all here today. Next order of a business is public comments. There has been a sign-up sheet up on the podium, there is in front of the room. If you're signed up, please come forward.
Doesn't mean lead.
It doesn't mean lead, but they're on any. It's empty, okay. We have nobody signed up to leave public comments this evening?
No, I had to.
Would you like to say something, Mrs. Hicks?
Yes, I would. Actually, I would like to ask what our.
Please come forward, state your name, city of residence, and make your comments.
Gentlemen, it's Sunnyside, and you all know where I live. Um, I would, we just got new houses put on the end of Wheeler Street, and they put up a new pole. And I would like to have a light put on that pole, because it's a dead-end cul-de-sac. We've had a lot of extra traffic, and they're coming in there flying and not realizing that it's a dead-end street. We could even get a sign that says "Dead End Street," and then a light on that pole, it would light up everything, and make everything look really nice.
Very good, thank you.
I would appreciate it.
I see Mr. Fisher writing furiously, so.
Thank you for.
Any other comments this evening?
Why not? I just have such a good feeling tonight, and I am so grateful for those that are serving us and their families, that are supporting them, and I love Sunnyside. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to meet you. For the, yeah, this is doing great, and we are finally top up. That was a nice three, and I just appreciate all of you that always serve us. I remember these things.
Thank you very much.
I would love to, I have so much to say.
All right. Next item of business, that is the consent agenda. Item A, payroll vouchers, approved payroll vouchers, number one-one-nine-two-five-one through one-one-nine-two-five-one, and wire transfers as listed for six hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents for the period ending February tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Approved payroll voucher numbers one-one-nine-two-five-two through one-one-nine-two-five-six, and wire transfers as listed for six hundred ninety-seven thousand forty-two dollars and one cent for the period ending February twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three. Claim vouchers, approved claim voucher numbers one-zero-five-seven-five-nine through one-zero-five-eight-one-nine, and wire transfers as listed for three hundred and eight thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and forty-seven cents for the period ending on February twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Approved claim voucher numbers one-zero-five-eight-two-zero through one-zero-five-eight-six-two, and wire transfers as listed for ninety-three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and twenty-one cents for the period ending on March one, two thousand twenty-three. And approved claim voucher numbers one-zero-five-eight-six-three through one-zero-five-nine-two-seven, and wire transfers as listed for five hundred eleven thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars and forty cents for the period ending on March eight, two thousand twenty-three. Any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I don't, but I do have a question about, um, number, the payroll vouchers, number one. Is that number opposed to be identical?
Assistant Andrew, was there one payroll voucher of that one? I think it was for six hundred fifty-five dollars, I'm thinking there's only one.
It's only one, one check in that amount, and it was a correction.
Okay, okay. I just noticed that, and I was thinking. Okay, thank you.
Further, any other items somebody would like to remove? Hearing none, what is the desired council on this item?
Vote to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion by Council Wheeler, second by Council Hart, to approve the consent agenda as posted, any debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no. I also vote aye, motion passes. Active agenda. Item A, Yakima Valley Conference of Government, YVCOG, updates to receive a report from the Yakima Valley Conference of Governments. And we have somebody here who's more than willing to do that, welcome.
So, each of the council people have the log.
May I, please, that's it, you state your name to the record.
But I did actually send a PowerPoint so that the audience could see what we were going through. So, this is just a, um, work for our members, this is not the annual, or the other topics. So, on the first page, um, is the staff, that serves your community, and also, um, the. For twenty-two, each year, YVCOG looks at community members who actually provide services up and down the valley. And this last year, it was for Sheriff Hubel, and she traveled with us to all of the different communities, fighting the crime lab. So, they were awarded. Deputy Mayor of Sunnyside, M.C.G., is our board chair, so there is a little message along with our. So, what our purpose is, who are Jack Committee and Policy Board people, and then also who the general membership represents for the city of Sunnyside. I'd like to remind you that YVCOG was formed in nineteen sixty-six, and the only purpose is to serve our city. Every programs, projects, that you decide we should administer for you and for our other member cities. We do that by sharing in the resources and sharing in the cost, to lower the cost for all of our cities. And we also look at, um, grant resources available to benefit all of our cities. The first program that we are going to talk about is our transportation program. Our responsibility is to remain compliant with state and federal funding, which allows the federal funding to flow through to our city. And so, we will receive federal funding for transportation, for the campus structure, is because our staff is doing what they need to do, which is making sure that everything's. Um, and you can see at the bottom what some of the highlighted programs were. Can you go back one? Um, and then you can also see some of the different, uh, transportation planning that we do. So, it isn't just federal and state, it's also the community transaction, human services, um, transportation planning, it's air quality, complete streets. So, it's, it's anything that has to do with how people move from one point to another point. Next is our current planning. Planning that we do has to do with the, uh, the zones. For all of those applications that your city takes, what type of use of your, and care in the city. This last year, we have been working in, in six of our cities for the Housing Action Plan. The Housing Action Plan is, and that actually goes into your complex, your complex have different elements in there. One of those is housing. And so, we received a ransom comment for seventy-five thousand dollars per city to update the Housing Action Plan. When we do that, we work directly with city councils, because you are the ones that make the decisions of what your housing plans will look like. Your payment conditions actually come in face to, which is the Housing Action Act, which is. Really interesting is there's four billion dollars coming down for the next few years for housing. Four billion dollars. So, we definitely want to get ahead of that, so that you are ready to implement and apply that you may want for your community. We, um, did outreach with our Housing Action Plan, and it was very interesting to hear that the general public sees it's government's job to create housing. So, how that actually looks, um, is very interesting, but what we have done, we have brought in the developers and the realtors to then ultimately help eliminate those barriers. Um, you don't actually have this slide in your book, but I wanted to show you what they, what the basis for this is. It is the missing middle. So, it is those houses for your teachers, higher schools, for those people who have very good status conditions that are being, um, prioritized when it comes to housing. This is some of the housing that we are looking at, some of it may be something you are interested in in Sunnyside, some of it may not. Every community is different. It's really important to listen to you and listen to people who desire the type of housing they would like. So, what we have here in the top left, that is, um, what millennials are liking this, so they would like an apartment over some of your businesses. And then in the top right, those are cottages, those are really for seniors, for retired people who, um, just want a small house, but don't, or yard is too big. The bottom left, that is generational living. That's actually a new tract, with a family and maybe a campout suite, or another family member living in the other part. And then that bottom right, that is what those thirty-year-olds are loving, which is more the condos, parking in the back, um, and a sidewalk for being on the walk-in community. As I said, this is totally dependent on each community, not every community this is working. But it's an opportunity for you to make those decisions without. Um, and so, when it's next go-around, if you can go to the. The next go-around for the Housing Action Plan, Congress will be, again, providing grants of seventy-five thousand dollars. If you would like us to do that, um, you can just have your city manager reach out to me, and we. The next, um. Go back. The next service that we provide is the mapping, the GIS mapping. It's a great tool to be able to look at your map and be able to just see where zoning is at, um, and how you have different areas of. We're working with Yakima County Development Association for a customized map for developers. So, if a developer calls, looking for a parcel, maybe he has six, a lot, they haven't. Um, at that parcel, YCPA will be able to pull up the map and be able to tell them if that type of parcel is available on Sunnyside. We put a disclaimer in there that they have to contact the city, because we all know that zoning changes rapidly all the time. We try to get something, it could be different two weeks later. The other, um, exciting tool that we have is called Streetlight. And that bottom right, where the, um, red towers are at, that is showing the traffic going to the Toppenish Casino, um, and where they are coming from. That is morning traffic, so we believe that that is the workers there at the Toppenish Casino. But we can actually track that, which shows you how traffic is flowing for your city, what roads, um, you may need to be repairing and considering putting down ground out for Streetlight. The community law enforcement partnership that we did, we did this for every community throughout the valley. Um, and this really is just community outreach, community engagement. So, what we did is we went out and we surveyed, and we spoke with people about, um, the different types of interaction with law enforcement. When we did this, there were two things that happened. One is, we had other groups come in that wanted to be a part of this. So, for instance, YWCA, they were supposed to, they wanted to be a part of this. There's a picture in the, um, bottom left corner, which is called Kidney Plain Sight. That specific picture, what they did is they set up a room, and it's supposed to be a teenager's bedroom, and then they have drug paraphernalia and/or game-related, um, items, objects, laying throughout that room. And then they have law enforcement, and that council goes through and sees if they could identify all of them. They didn't even get half. What's happening is, we're trying to educate parents when this is moving so rapidly, they may see the news for law enforcement, and they are seeing this all the time. So, when we do outreach, we start with a survey, and then we create a task force for your community, where we use that survey. Then we do pop-up meetings, we go into schools, we go to the dorms, we go to anywhere where there are people, um, and we ask them their priorities that we learned off of your survey. Then we take that back to the steering committee, and they determine what they want to present to the council for the priority. The reason this is so important is that when this happens, one day it's open for federal and state funding. And I want to tell you that, because when we did the community outreach in Toppenish, they received over a million dollars in addition, just because of the outreach. So, it's very, next page. So, this, we have a, um, housing manager at CAG, and we are looking at senior assistance programs for seniors. Um, what this does is, if there's a senior who their hot water tank breaks, and they cannot afford to fix that, um, and if they qualify, if they are, if they eighty percent or lower, um, time, we can go in and fix that hot water tank for them. So, that serves two purposes. One, it allows that person to age in life, which is extremely important, um, and it also prevents him from being displaced and becoming homeless, which is. We are currently offering this program in Toppenish, Wapato, and Mount Kitten, but if your city would like to be a part of this, you can, or your manager, talk to me. The next program that we're running is health issues in Toppenish. And again, I keep saying Toppenish, because they're the ones that receive all of those federal funding and state funding outreach. What we are doing in Toppenish is we are able to look at health issues in different homes, where they have to, um, each back to the store, and how to increase their housing stock if they have vacant lots. Go live. We can go in and actually assist these people. What we learned in Toppenish is that a lot of their, um, concerns is overcrowding in homes. And some of the effects of overcrowding can be disease, and, 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 and for gaming equipment. We have older, cousins, uncles, friends, or friends living in the home. We just, we learn so much during outreach, that it's allowed us to branch out into other areas. So, the last few slides that you see, um, is actually our revenue and our expenditures, uh, each. So, that you can see where we receive our money, and then how we spend it. I think it's very important to show and be completely transparent with all of that for you. As you can see, the majority of our expenditures are for staff, and not. My notes are, so you don't have to buy paper instructions like you do. Our future priorities for twenty twenty-three, you can go, um, at the end, you do those, but I can tell you that, um, besides housing and being able to bring in more funding for the purposes that you want, one of our, um, probably our number one priority is to get the crime lab up and running. Next slide, please. So, I just wanted to give you an update of where we are at. And wow, um, we have purchased equipment, we have high, um, we have offered positions to people, they are actually going through their contracts right now. We have purchased computers, we have submitted our application to Washington State Patrol, and to. and to the FBI. Teachers have been written, policy has been written, a NIBN consultant has been secured, that is, equipment, that looks at bullet casing, analysts, and all of the different databases that we will be researching, all of those applications are in. We have access into spillment and are anticipating to start a day of staff as April first, so right around the corner. That is YB Cog twenty twenty-two. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that report, and counsel, any questions for Chris?
I, there was one on the housing. I remember talking to you about that not too long ago, of Bloodmore, we were talking about it. And at that time, we're sure about how the money situation was going to be, but I see that that's kind of been adjusted so that cities like, because there was already a bunch of cities involved.
Yes.
But this is like more cities could be involved.
Correct.
So many cities could be involved. So move on that.
Yeah.
And the house, the type of housing, I think that, that you were suggesting and is being suggested that people want right now in that middle income area is, you've got that spot on. I'm seeing, I'm seeing that more and more all the time, and that's, I'm really excited about that. Got the crime lab, so good, good for that.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll let you know, that is what the community is telling us. So, yeah, it's very interesting to do.
Good question, the comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, members, council. I want to thank YB Cog's executive director, Chris Wickenhagen, for coming this evening and presenting the COGS program. And I'd also like to thank council member Kevin Wickenhagen for attending the meeting tonight as well. So, great program, and I'm happy to answer questions for council one-on-one anytime you need me to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Don't forget, we have an amazing resource in our deputy mayor here. He, he can't answer any questions that you have, and in the rare occasion that he may not be able to answer said question, he knows exactly who to contact to find the answer. You'll know in less than five minutes. So it's a resource we can take advantage of. So, and Chris, I do want to thank you for being here. It was a very informative report. I'm happy to see what is coming along. I agree one hundred percent with your housing assessment. I think that, like my colleague here said, that you're spot on on that. That is what you're hearing from the community, that's what we're hearing from the community, so I'm looking forward to that. I appreciate the, the senior program with giving their housing needs and repairing of whatever needs to be fixed. That is hugely important in their lives, that so many of them want to stay in their home, and for them to be forced out of their home is devastating. So that is, that is just great. So, and then the crime lab, of course, I've been cheering for that ever since I first heard about it, and so I think we're all pretty excited about it. Thank you so much for the work that you guys are all doing. All right, the next item of business is an executive session. And the executive session will have three purposes. The first one is in, pertains to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one C to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or leased when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price. However, final action, selling or leasing public property shall be taken in a meeting opened to the public. Second portion is pertaining to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one four zero four P. That portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations, or grievance, or mediation proceedings, or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiation or proceedings filed in progress. And finally, RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is likely to become a party, when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the agency, there is possible action. That being said, we ask that you step outside for the twenty minutes that we are requesting, and we will call you back in when those twenty minutes are up, or when we have to ask for more attention. Thank you so much. All right, we're back in open session. I want to thank everybody for their patience, and there was no action on the item. Next item of business, public hearing, Monson Property, received comments on declaring the Monson Property surplus. Public hearing is being conducted and received comments about declaring the Monson Property surplus. Fairness, fairness disclosures. The concern is that this hearing be fair, informed, and substance as well as appearance. Councilmembers, do any of you have a conflict of interest concerning this issue? Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? If your answer is yes, please speak no. Councilmembers, can you here consider this in a fair and objective manner? If your answer is no, please speak no. Audience members, at this time, we would ask the audience if there's any objections to my participation or any other council member's participation in these. Public hearing is now open at six thirty-three, seven thirty-three, that's right, seven thirty-three. All right, this is the order of the hearing. City manager staff will preside the staff report on this item. At this time, we'll hear from the city manager. Planning staff to present the planning commission recommendation. Madam City Manager.
Thank you. The staff report, I will actually ask Trevor Martin to.
I have the property, I think you're familiar with it, on the west side of town known as the Monson Site. It's about a hundred, a little less than a hundred and fifty acres. It contains two wells, city utilities running up to the eastern boundary. It's M one, which is our light section. So the city has received this property and are to declare this property a surplus, so
Councilmembers, any questions or comments on this item?
Long time coming. We need to sell this. Hear this.
Other questions or comments?
Well, certainly, certainly glad to have interests being shown in that property at long last, and to have it to actually do what we intended to do with the property that they got, you know, how, make it productive. But in order to do that, this is the route we need to go.
Other comments, questions? I want to say that, thank you, Mr. Sutti. Okay, I want to say that I do agree with my colleagues. This has been a long time coming. We've been driving past this property for a fair number of years now, all looking forward to the day that it would be sold, developed, turned into something useful and hopefully beautiful. And we've had our hopes raised briefly a time or two, but I like the pictures I'm seeing. I like the ideas I'm hearing. I like the, I like the thought processes going into it. So that is exciting. But we're talking actually about the surplusing of this property. I think before we can actually sell property, we have to declare that a surplus. We don't need it. City of Sunday Side doesn't know what to do as a community or as a city body with a hundred and fifty acres at this time. I'm too well to not go take all of that. So, any, any further comments before I close the hearing? When he's racing to the microphone, you have an individual, yes, sir? Please state your name and your community residence.
Over, we, we're, we're here today to hear Chris's talk on what the community's interested in. They're looking to do with this property is cut some multifamily housing, residential For the planning itself, what has, that area forest, because that also gives this state where they can see other ends on the side, as well as, you know, bringing community entertainment, that part, you know, family, something to bring to build a community. And, you know, so we're looking at, we're, you know, looking at, as well as a park around Working on it for a few months, getting all of our, doing our due diligence. But we are very excited, so, yeah, we look forward to working with that.
Thanks, sir. Right, there's no further comments? Public hearing is now closed. Six, seven thirty-eight. Let's page that. Next item, surplusing the Monson Property. We've held a public hearing on this. Consider approving a resolution declaring the Monson Property surplus. Has the city manager given anything to add to this?
And it looks like we need to repeal the FMC three dot one two before we surplus. So I was going to ask that we move the surplusing to the next meeting. So we, we can hold a public hearing today, but we'll just move the surplus so that we can repeal the FMC first.
Council, councilmembers, any objection to that?
Not at all.
No objection? So that will appear on our next agenda. How do you think, move it? Item E, Ameresco Energy Savings Presentation, receive a presentation and consider approving funding lighting upgrades in all city buildings. Madam City?
This item was brought forward to you at the last city council meeting, and it was approved on the mound. So we wanted to make sure that the correct amount was brought forward and that we were showing the funding sources for that. If you recall, the money that we had at the last one was right around two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, a little shy, and we found that that was the incorrect amount. We hadn't included the cost of the study, basically, pay costs, there was development costs for the plan, and all of the stuff that, that basically we didn't include. So the five hundred and eight thousand dollars is the ask, so we wanted to make sure that that is brought forward and that council knows that that is the amount that we're asking to get our lighting upgrades in all city buildings. And that's the, that is the highest it would be. It could come in a little lower than that, but it wouldn't be much.
Council, questions, comments?
How long has that changed? We're looking at like eleven years.
It still, it didn't change the return on investment because in that worksheet was the right number. I just pulled the wrong number for the city council.
That's great.
So the return on investment's the same, and then really all of the information was the same. I slipped to the wrong page, and so we made sure that this went to Chris McCarthy that was at our meeting the last time, and he reviewed all of the paperwork on Friday and made sure that I have the right. If you would scroll down for a second, here's a worksheet that shows. The young is as follows. It would be ninety-four thousand eight hundred for streets, one, a hundred and four thousand five hundred, read two, a hundred and thirty-six, and respectively, and all the enterprise funds. They're the ones that, you know, we build the rates into that. We do have the money to make this.
Questions, comments, council?
I know we just redid the, on the first street.
Only the gymnasium.
But that was just in the gym?
That was just in the gymnasium, and then this would be the rest of the building.
I do want to say that the difference in the gymnasium is phenomenal.
Yeah.
Lights, much better.
Well, hearing, no comment from council. I will give my comment. I wasn't here for the first presentation. Being these numbers, the scene that the return on investment is only eleven years, this is just lighting. And be able to get a return on investment for that kind of money, that's phenomenal. Kind of exciting to be able to see that. Quite often, we're looking at a lot longer term, but, and, and then to suddenly understand that we've got the money in place already to start tomorrow, if, if that's possible, I like that as well. I get frustrated that government process is taking as long as they do, and owning a business of my own, I know that when I make a decision to implement it, because that's just what I do, and to have to work with the government where it's like, well, we've got seventeen thousand forms we have to fill out, is a little bit frustrating. So I do like the process, I'd like to be ready to go.
More comment?
Yes, sir.
Everybody just looks up in this building. You'll see we have lights that don't work, we have white lights, we have soft lights, and that's kind of the whole city, and it's going to change.
And to comment on that, our city crews have not been replacing light bulbs on purpose as we didn't want to waste money, we were hoping this would go through. And at city hall, we have some places that are pretty, we really appreciate this.
Get close to me, flashlights in your pocket, and you give it time depending on where you are.
Now, do we need to make, we have a motion on this, or is it?
Yes, we would need to have approval.
All right. Any further comments or questions? All right, what is the desire, council on this item?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilor Hicks, second by Councilor Beeler, to approve funding lighting upgrades in all city buildings for the amount of five hundred and eight thousand dollars. Any discussion or debate on this item?
That works on the air conditioning too, all of that?
No.
Or this is just lights? Okay.
Lights.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? People aye, have unanimous votes. Municipal Engineering Services Contract Award. Consider approving a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying to provide municipal engineering services to the city of Sunday Side for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five. Manager.
So it turns over to Public Works Director Shane Fisher. He is the person that reviewed all of the submissions and then.
So every three years, we solicit SOQs, statements of qualification for engineering. And what we do is we basically put that out on paper, engineering firms will send us. I was going to bring up a book, but I forgot, but it's usually eight or ten pages, talks about their qualifications, you know, a little bit about their firm, different engineering disciplines that they, they provide and can provide us. We basically, we look at those, we have about eight mills this year, I think, eight people. Only two of them qualified. The other six either didn't have engineering for airport transportation, or they were only for, they were in the, real testing. So basically what we did is we, we sat down, Bemroll Sanchez, went through all the, all the SOQs, and two that we ended up with was JV and HLA. So at that point, we sit down, we do an interview with each firm, and we ask them a list of eight or ten questions. And we asked them a list of eight or ten questions about their firm, um, experience they've had with transportation, infrastructure, that kind of thing. And from that, um, from that interview, we then make the decision, a recommendation to the city manager. With you guys to, to select a. Precisely answering the questions.
Any questions, council?
I think that, uh, H, gotta look at the initials because I'll mess it up. HLA.
We're seeing Lowman and Associates.
Thank you. Um, will, uh, have, have been very good to us in the terms of times that we've been using them on different projects. And they've done a number to great satisfaction, um, here in the last five years, at least that I, that I'm aware of. They're working on one water project over in, on office sixteen. By the high school that they're working diligently on. So they do have a good reputation and they are very well. Take good care of what they're doing.
Yeah, I got an email, uh, this morning from, from JV. Um, and they want to know, hey, give me a call. Can we have a quick little phone conversation about why we were successful? Now, what is HLA doing that we're not doing? Help us get into that. Um, and really that kind of reply from me is, is, you know, I, I'm going. Basically does a great job. There's no reason to make a change. Um, if you were to actually make that change from one. It's, it's a painful transition and, um, and if you're going to take that step, you better prepare for. A lot of lost information and data that goes from one. It completely happened with HLA. Did a great job. About thirty engineers of where they came to play.
I'd like to comment. Um, I started working with HLA when it was called something to Lowman and Associates. Mayor called it. I started working with them in Crofters in two thousand and eight. Every city I've worked at where they've been engineers has had excellent service and excellent interaction with their. They take the onus of representing us in, in a lot of different areas. And sometimes we get grants that they look for for. And the reason we, they know about them is they are very heavily. Valley City. They know what's going on in other jurisdictions.
Mr. Mayor?
And they've been really great.
Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, did you have a comment?
Just a quick comment. Mr. Mayor, just wanted to kind of add what, what others are saying about HLA. I've worked with them for over a decade, um, with the YV cog, a great organization. Mike Battle is extremely knowledgeable and, um, you know, worked with him on many projects, uh, at the cog level. So I'm, I'm really excited to see this, us continuing to use them.
And I would like to say I agree with my colleagues on this. I had the opportunity to work all over the valley with my business and I have never heard a single word of complaint against HLA. And, um, I feel like the city has been very satisfied over the years with their service and, yeah, as Mr. Fisher said, it's not broke. All right. If there are no further comments. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Hey, we got motion by councillor Ripley. Deputy Mayor, would you like to second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay. Since you were ready to make the motion. All right. We got a motion by councillor Ripley, second by deputy mayor Rissucci to, um, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with HLA Engineering and Land Surveying to provide municipal engineering services to the city of Sunnyside for fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-five. Debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Two vote aye, motion carries. M G Water and Sewer Rate Study Amendment. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute task order two, zero, one, eight, dash, zero, one, amendment number one, to complete the water and sewer rate study in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Madam City Manager?
I would ask if we pull this item. Um, Jameson let me know that the adoption of the new, um, contract and what was it called? It's, it's basically diversity policy. Um, I'm actually allowed to find this without having it to come to council. And Shane and I kind of got our wires crossed the last week.
Council, is there any objection to pulling this item this evening? Were granted your request, Madam City Manager?
Thank you.
It was in red. I didn't even see it. You know, sometimes they put it in red. I don't notice it. All right. Item four, items from council members. Mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. I don't believe I have anything up. Two, then missed a phone call somewhere.
Need them, but forget. I hope you didn't want to do part of the part. When you see person relying on them.
Hey, very good. I will. Up with you about that. Next item, council request status report. Madam City Manager?
Really no changes from the last city council meeting. And to let it keep rolling until we have some action on it. Few things are on hold due to weather. Some things, um, like Roger Brooks is, they are being worked on. So there, you know, it just takes time for us to have some.
All right. Council members, if, if there's anything you would like to add to the council request status report, uh, you can indicate at this time or contact the city manager to get that put on the list. All right. Other reports, announcements, and/or questions by council. And we're just going to start with Mr. Beeler and move on down the line.
I've had so many people come up to me. I had a wonderful opinion we had. The city manager for it.
Thanks. Ms. Ripley?
I agree with, uh, Martin there. It was a, it was a very nice award ceremony.
Ms. Hart?
I would echo that. Um, very moving. But I do have a question. I was reading in our, uh, the week, the city manager's weekly brief. Something about Cinco de Mayo coming under the city's jurisdiction or organization. Can you explain maybe what that does?
Sure. So, um, A and A Productions or what is it? A and A Promotion has decided that they no longer want to, um, do this event. So the city is going to take. Um, it, it historically was, uh, a long time ago under the Chamber of Commerce. And Amy, um, Rubio Campos, that is A and A Promotion. She worked for the Chamber of Commerce. So when this came under the auspices of LTAS, she decided to use it as her business and then, and do that, but she decided she doesn't. Think of the values anymore. And we don't want to do that to fail. So.
Are we going to put it back out to, um, another promotion group?
I don't really know.
We don't, we're not going to keep it for?
I think we should keep it. It's, it's the city. It's, it's what we call a special inventory, whether they call it a signature event. And I think that the city has so much to do with it that we need to take the onus of all of this. Um, it's really honestly, um, Amy's got a lot of negative feedback from the event from, uh, last year. And there were several things that were handled in a way that I think could have been, um, and I think having. In the role of taking the lead is, is a better idea.
I was just, I was just looking for an explanation. Not quite sure how I feel about that, but thank you for the explanation.
Farmer?
No comments or questions.
Deputy Mayor?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Sir. So I was just going to add to the, uh, swearing in ceremony. I thoroughly enjoyed that ceremony. It was great to see everybody there. It was great to see the family support and the fellow officer, fellow firefighter support that everybody received as well. Uh, the enthusiasm in the room that night was, was just amazing to see. And, yeah, you know, there, there's stuff that's, well, you know, it's hard to be the mayor, you know, when, when you hear about somebody getting shot at. That's tough to hear, but when we see our emergency personnel standing up there united and supporting each other and being supported by not only the city, but by family, I think that was an awesome experience. I think everybody got a lot out of that. It was, it was great to be a part of that. And so on a very personal level, I'm very glad that I insisted that we wait until I get back from my, my extended vacation. And I got to participate in that because that was just absolutely brilliant for me to do. I loved it. So, well done, Madam City Manager. That was, that was your idea when you pitched it to me and I want to thank you for the excellent value. Upcoming council meetings. Madam City Manager?
We see our agenda and planning schedules have nothing on it. Um, but we know as, as we have experience and also. If you like. We, we know that items from tonight, we already have, um, you know, the repeal of the SMC. We have the, um, bonus of the property. Those things we moved and then there are several things that are in the works that that company just didn't.
Our agendas will always have plenty to do. Item from department heads.
I'm going to ask Jackie if she would like to go first. We recently, um, finished implementing, uh, our social. Account, I do see on our website. So, um, in common for. Third keyword.
I don't have anything to. Um, six street projects still going, going well. Um, still working forever a little bit, but we are making progress. Um, working with all the adjacent businesses around there. We moved back into Franklin Court, um, last week and a little bit this week during the tie-ins to get the. We were kind of waiting for parts and materials coming. When it warms up, we'll get the paving done and everything. Uh, then the Catholic charities, uh, housing services started back up again. They go. We'll start working on Wednesday. Uh, we were kind of held up on, had a little bit of a back and forth with us and CCH on a change order. Back in and we'll start, uh. Structure of the water and storm. As you've seen, they've got houses going out there at the same time. So we're kind of trying to get coordinated to get that, that critical. I just have a couple of stats for you. Um, in the last month, we handled six hundred and forty-eight incidents, handled three hundred and nine traffic stops. We had sixty-four arrests, thirty-seven criminal non-traffic, thirty-seven criminal traffic. Hundred and thirty-five traffic infractions. And today I met with, uh, Parker Hughes Foundation and received a, we asked for a five hundred dollar grant. They owned their home up to two thousand because they liked our projects, but the police department, we've worked with Walmart. We're going to buy sports equipment at cost. Carrying in our patrol cars and being able to pass it out to kids we see at the park. So I brought you this handy check to look at. I felt like I was in a golf tournament or something.
Oh, that's nice.
So we received this today and, uh. Working on getting the sports equipment purchased here in a couple of weeks so we can see the kids out in the park with new equipment.
Chief, I just want to jump in too and just say I am impressed with your officers and how well they're keeping their, uh, their, their take-home cars. They're cleaned up and everything's looking really spiffy. And then of course it rained immediately, but I think they're looking really good.
Well, I know of at least two that have hired, um, detailers. One spent five hundred dollars to get the strip coat on his car. On his own. He says he wanted his car a little bit. So, um, and I know at least another one that hired a detailer to clean their car off. So, um, and I want to thank you for the penny and let us take one of your readings for that. It was important to the staff and I think it was received with everybody.
Are you going to comment?
Uh, just on this, um, I, I heard mention of this and it was, is there a name for this, this, uh, new kind of community outreach that you're doing with the sports equipment? Have you named it something?
Do you have one?
I, I certainly. I could certainly thank you for. I decided to have. Well, it's a cool project. Yep.
So to keep everybody informed, uh, actually take a step back. I'd like to echo again the, uh, the badge and ceremony appreciation. Um, I know my staff, um. It just, but every one of them was my full-time employees, uh, came to me and expressed their gratitude and, uh, and appreciation for, for the event. So. Uh, again, to keep the council informed on the happening with the fire department, um, I just want to get some, just real quick data as well. Uh, please, we haven't had a, a presentation yet since, uh, the culmination of calendar year twenty twenty-two. Um, so just a real quick recap of that, um, in twenty twenty-two, city's ninety-nine fire, I have four thousand, four hundred and seventy emergency calls, uh, which is an increase of four hundred and eighteen calls from the year prior. Just to kind of put that into perspective for, for council members, um, Yakima Countywide, we are by far the leading department in call volume, second to the city. So we are in the, the busy house. Incidents to date, March one to date, um, actually since we've been here, that call was increased, but we just. But we ran a hundred and fifteen year nuts calls and eight fires specific calls, uh, for a total of a hundred and twenty-three calls. Forty-three of which of those are, are overlapping calls and calls where we have. Ongoing simultaneous. Pretty factor in our call line, which, um, I can speak of half the fire services who have the pretty high number. On the, on the good news, we don't have any reportable loss of, uh, fire or light damage. That is excluding motor vehicle accidents, but we've had a, a good month so far. I would rather go ahead and knock on wood just in case. In regards to staffing, we have one volunteer resident that starts tomorrow for his first shift. That brings us to a total of four volunteer residents. Uh, the program is going very well. We appreciate the opportunity as are the, us of the residents to be a part of the agency. Um, also today we did have one additional go off, an offer class of, uh, one, hopefully three full-time. Back toward like the, the eighteen. Um, the, uh, the applicants, uh, need to speak with their staff first, but they were very excited to. Um, and, uh, last but not least, we did have a receptionist operator start this beginning last week. Um, and so far, um, he has been absolutely valuable and has been great. Council decision to approve that move, um. Very happy to have him.
Um, is he, if we come over there just randomly lightheaded? Qualified to take my blood pressure?
So at this point, he is not medically trained, but thanks within the two years, I think, to a basic first aid CPR class. But he, uh, in big role, we needed to contact myself or one of the other firefighters to come to your.
So, I think the doors are open.
The doors are open, yes. So I know that was requested with council a while back to get this back open to the public and, uh, currently he is scheduled Monday through Friday, um, eight AM to four thirty PM. So. Are open to the public. Um, and we're here to get our classroom back open and start some teaching courses amongst other. Of course, it'll be open to the public, which.
Thank you.
Okay. So now my report. I've got all kinds of really good, cool things going on, um, some of which you have learned about in the previous sessions. But I do want to say one thing with the, the penny and these friends. That was the work of Dean Albert that was. And that was the work of. Who did a lot of the labor, a lot of the ordering of things, making sure they went to Walmart and got waters and, and just making sure that, that it was ready to. Wasn't, it wasn't just me. And helped me a lot with that. And with that, I wanted to say. Thank you to our police and fire for, you know, having your families there and, and making it a celebration for our city. It really. And, uh, to remind council that we will be doing this again on May third. And, uh, to remind council that we will be doing this again on May third. Um, these will be scheduled quarterly and we will do them and. And, um, if I can find a staff member that's going to actually be in town this weekend, I will be leaving for Oregon on Friday and coming back on Sunday. Um, I've hit two people up and, and they've all declined that they're going to be out of town as well. I think I have two more staff members before the night's over to hit up. And then if not, I have one more person that was excused tonight that I will ask. So we will see if my reservations can stand. And if, if so, I will be leaving town on.
Michael, thank you, everybody. We are to the last item on our agenda. If there is no objection from anybody in council, we are adjourned. Thank you very much at eight oh seven PM.
Good night, everyone.